I'm calling Crewe Town Council meeting on the 13th January 2020 to order. This is the first meeting of the new year. Please join with me with the invocation, saying a Lord's Prayer. Our Father, who art in heaven, hallowed be thy name. A kingdom come, and a world now, our turn to visit him. He was just saying, king and reign, he gives us a trust that says, as you give me your trust, my kingdom comes. He is right in temptation, but never true evil. God has given power and glory forever. Please join with me in the floodgarden. Floodwaters, floodlight, the United States of America, through the republic, which saints one nation, one God, and the building of the country.
I need to fill out one of these things.
Yes ma'am.
At this time we take the elation from the public. I have none of them signed up. Is there anyone who did not sign up? Okay.
It was during the morning.
Okay.
Okay, I'll just go right here. Good evening. My name is Shu Yates and I am here tonight to express my concern about certain aspects of our town government. I am appalled and sickened at how powerful all levels of government have become, and I am of the opinion that we, the people, need to take a moment to take back our towns, our cities, our state and federal government. I believe that it is our elected official's duty to both hear us and serve us, not themselves and their friends. In the last several months, this council took it upon themselves to change the structure of our meetings and how much time a resident has to voice their concerns regarding their town. The residents are now being given five minutes at the beginning of each meeting. They must fill out a form that addresses what they want to talk about. It might be noted that in the event that the citizen has more than one concern to address, this makes them use their time in an even less efficient way. This allows a taxpaying citizen one hour a year to express their concerns publicly. The town council then has the right to respond to the citizen or refute what the citizens have to say with no limitations, but the citizen is not afforded the right to respond to the town council or to even correct what might have been heard. I have been witness to one too many times in recent months to the abuses that this type of format affords citizens. It needs to stop. This is not effective two-way communication outlined this way. I am told that this rule was changed to its current status because the council wanted to limit what our political candidates had to say. Well, you not only limited our political candidates, but you limited the very citizens that elected you. Further, one of the candidates that raced our meetings was elected in a landslide. This should speak volumes to those of you that sit on town council. And while I am aware that this newly elected official was not favored by everyone on Crewe Town Council, it is clear that he was favored by many in Crewe as represented by his landslide victory. You brought state representatives to rock and write to this very same meeting and gave them all the time they wanted to address the citizens of this town. I think that this shows the bias of this leadership. You cannot have one set of rules for one person and another set for others. I've been to enough meetings lately to be sure that this is grossly unfair to each and every citizen in effect that elected you. This town has been neglected in many ways for a long time. Our infrastructure is poor at best. We, the citizens of the town of Crewe, have entrusted our financial investment of our homes to you, and thus our homes and yours are depreciating in value instead of appreciating invaluable. We have trusted you with our safety. What more do the citizens deserve? It is the right to be heard. We hear the term "deep state" in regards to our federal and state governments. Well, I personally don't see any difference between the deep state of higher government and a good old boys' club of county to county and town. The outcome is always the same. The deep state and the good old boys have their voices heard and a different set of standards are applied to them. I believe that the time has come for the citizens of each town, county, state and federal levels to take back what is rightfully theirs. This is their voice, and you do not have the right to take it away. Therefore, I am stepping forward in an active mode move to have this unfair and biased format changed to affect good two-way communication when it comes to the running of our town. This new format only works to embolden our elected officials in a very unfair way and leaves each citizen to a very unfair disadvantage. In closing, it is my recommendation that this new five-minute form be changed back to what it was. One, each citizen should be given a fair amount of time, five to 10 minutes, to express their concern for subject matter. Two, no citizen should be forced to write down the subject matter of what their concern is, in that they hear others, as they hear others speak, they may have a comment to make. The council should respond. Each citizen should be afforded a time at the end of the meeting to speak back, to speak also, and in some cases, to stand up for themselves, as I've witnessed lately. Further, we're the only town in Nonway County that has limited the right for the citizens to be heard. It is my prayer that the citizens are given the time they need to express themselves and, if needed, to defend themselves. Your agenda should be our agenda. You were elected to be our voice. It is up to each one of you to listen and hear what we have to say. I don't want to feel placated. I want to be heard. When meetings are set up this way, it is to limit the citizens' comments, and it is a way for the board to move forward with its own agenda regardless of how or what the citizens have to say. As a resident of the town of Crewe, you know, I don't like it. And then in closing, real quick, some months back, a special town meeting was promised to the citizens so that the citizens could have a time to speak. What happened to the promised meeting?
Thank you, Mr. Yates. Please give a copy to the clerk in the new room's box in writing. Would that allow to move on to the consent calendar? Now that's on the consent calendar, consented routine will be approved by one motion. Any item can be reviewed from the calendar at the request of a member of council and individually noted all separately. You will find the minutes of the town council meeting held on the 9th of December. You will find the minutes of the work sessions on the 18th, 18th and 30th December relative to town manager search. You will find the bill seat and the additions. With the motion.
May I just say a very brief, very quick edit to the minutes of the three assembly meeting?
Go ahead.
Just to clarify, the second-to-last paragraph, the mayor was authorized to meet and offer to President A candidate, I believe you said Candidate A, so we identified candidate B more specifically than says in here.
We will make a correction to offer to Candidate A, the position of town manager. That is amended. I will send Madam Clerk an amended copy. If she will approve.
That's just to ensure that everything was?
Yes, my pleasure. Thank you. Anything else? Do we have a motion to approve?
Move to approve with the correction noted.
We have a motion back in a second. We have a motion on the second to approve the minutes and the bill seat and additions with the amended corrections. All opposed by like side. Motion carries. At this point, we have a town manager's report, and I'm glad to report we have now have a town manager. Thank you, thank you. Mr. Brian Thrower is our new town manager. He emerged at the top after talking to about 21 different, or looking at 21 different managers and interviewing about eight different folks. And Mr. Thrower comes to us from a long background, having served as the town manager for the town of the Emporial, and some other localities as assistant or town manager. Strong financial background, Virginia tech and master, right?
Yes, sir.
And public administration. Right. So we look forward to having you onboard. He started on Friday, therefore he won't be doing much tonight, except for us thanking you. Thank you. I want you to know that Vice Mayor and I are very glad to have you here.
Glad to be here, thank you.
I do, deal. Town Attorney's report.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I have a memorandum just summarizing what we, what I have done in, between the last meeting and this meeting, and if you all will, please take one and have a deal. And then in the interim, just to summarize what's going on, the Watson House came down today, so, and then also, we had sent a letter to Carol H. Gibson, who is the owner of the Hussey House. We had notified her that if she didn't correct the defects in the property in 30 days from the day of the letter, that we will proceed against her asking for simple penalties. I'm pleased to note with that, too, that her son called into the town office today and wants to talk, so I'm going to call him back first thing in the morning. So that is good news. I hope they can arrange to get it fixed in a timely manner. In addition to that, I also have, we had discussed last time a little bit, the possibility of making an amendment to the code, the Crewe Town Code regarding landlords and tenants, and when a tenant can be responsible for utility payments. And so this is really just to make the town code consistent with the Virginia State Code. Specifically, all the town code says is that a property owner has, is responsible for all the utility bills. The State Code does provide a way for a tenant to be responsible for utility bills instead of just the property owner. And so what I did is I have a draft ordinance for everyone's consideration, and then we would need to advertise it for a public hearing at the next meeting or whenever you all would desire. It doesn't have the entire code in it, but I think that the ordinance captures what it needs to capture, so. And basically, what it says is, in order for a tenant to be liable, you know, in order for a tenant to basically have the utilities turned over in their name, there's certain things that they have to do. They have to get authorization from the property owner, and then usually, too, in most circumstances, there also has to be some sort of security deposit required. So.
You want to review this or authorize advertising at this point?
Whatever, council.
Yeah, with this council's pleasure. This basically brings us in alignment with Virginia State Code.
Correct.
And gives us some extra options, alternative to go after the tenant.
Yes.
For unpaid bills.
And the language from the ordinance says, "copy verbatim from the code."
Okay.
And this would hold the tenant responsible and never fall back on the landowner?
That is not necessarily correct. So the tenant is responsible as long as they, you know, meet the requirements.
Yeah.
But if the town tries to collect from the tenant and it's not collectible, there are some instances where the town could still go after the landowner, too, because, you know, there's a lot of different ways to collect utilities, so it wouldn't necessarily always absolve the landowner from that responsibility.
And it says the town may, so we still have the option? Do we have the option on case-by-case basis?
We would need to be careful with that, and so maybe it's best to review it this month and see what we have to say, but we would need to be careful with reviewing it on a case-by-case basis, I would say, you know.
Okay. Thank you. That's to review it and probably go on next.
Okay, the town manager's got some information, too. Can we talk about that?
Okay, let's do it.
I was just supposed to do that, and we didn't.
Okay.
But that's not what I was trying to say.
Yeah, that sounds good.
All right. With that in mind, we'll set it aside.
And, oh, the last thing I would recommend town council to do is you all need to ratify the mayor's signature on the town manager's employment contract.
Okay, all right. Do we vote? Okay. So you need a, you need a motion of?
Yes, the motion would just be, "I hereby move to ratify the mayor's signature on employment agreement in her duty with the town manager."
Vice Mayor, want to make a motion?
What she said.
I second.
I was going to say.
I make a motion that we ratify the mayor's signature on the employment agreement. I second.
All right. We have a motion on the second. Is any further discussion? All the time, say aye. All opposed by like side.
Step on her.
Thank you, ma'am. I go right to the other. All right, good. Next on the agenda is the mayor's report, private report, the Crewe Police Department, recognized by the National Association of Town Watch as one of the top 10 in category six towns, it's towns of 5,000 or less, for its 2019 National Night Out. It is the only police department in the state of Virginia to be so recognized. Crewe was one of 16,940 communities participating in the National Night Out, which continues to grow, providing an excellent venue for public private cooperation and in support of law enforcement activities. In addition to this, the Crewe Police Department defends a significant amount of unpaid labor engaged in this activity. Further, many local businesses and local sponsors contributed significantly to its success, as our fire department, for example, was there in, or many of our local bedrooms and other groups. So there's many folks that played a role in that. I also have added into your package, I've gotten before Friday, a list of statistics. Now, these, if you look at your incident reports for 2016, 2017, 2018, and 2019, those incident reports are not calls for service, but criminal events, criminal calls. And what you see is a significant reduction in crime or in reporting from 2016 to 2019, it basically reflects a 46% decline in reported criminal activity. Now, that either means it's just less activity happening or people aren't reporting. I would submit it's the other. I would submit that the active controlling in the communities has kept a lot of people from committing crimes that otherwise might not have been observed. Did I want to share that with you? I got it late on Friday. It was too late for me, but in the council practice.
It seems to me it correlates to rest, so, oh, a fox in the east 46%. And horses are down.
Oh, yeah, so we'll make it more interesting. We also have the resignation of Councilman Bobby Duffy. Councilman Duffy's first reasons, he disappeared with disability to serve. We will adjourn to a closed session for personnel issues to discuss a potential replacement. And to request of a member of council, we did something on the letter to the Nonway County School Board, a question maybe you can put the graduation with Crewe Homecoming.
Mayor, do you have an update on that? I was at the school board meeting. They did bring it up. They looked into it for this year, actually, to begin with. Unfortunately, all graduations are positive in order and have the dates already on them, so they're finishing each graduation this year. The information I was working off of was an old version of the calendar for the 2020-2021 calendar year, school year. The newest version, the one that's before the school board now, going into its second reading, does have graduation on June the 5th, so it will not conflict with Crewe Homecoming. And the school board also said that they will keep Crewe Homecoming in consideration in future years.
Well, they have sent us a letter, the 30th.
Yes.
Okay, perfect. Good deal. Enforcement activity, the terminating utility bill extension, payment extensions, has resulted in more people paying their bills on time. Why? Why is it when they call up, they want to extend them because they've got this problem or that problem, and the clerk, and the assistant clerk say, "Nope," these folks will whip out a credit card and they will pay. The Foss tampering has resulted in several payments. At least, I found out, though, that Bertful's tampering time for one year is $1,000, that 500. So if we want to change that, you're always welcome to do that. You also should have in your package a fee, revisions for proposed fee increases. One of the things that we looked at was that we're not really making enough on our labor to cover these cutoffs when we have to do cutoffs. A reconnection fee, present fee is $25, and after-hours reconnect fee, if somebody comes in and pays and.
It's after the minutes.
We have to call somebody, say again? We have to call somebody and afterwards. We have to pay overtime and two hours of labor. And what I have proposed, or what we have proposed, is a labor-only fee. We worked in, we worked in what it actually cost us. It comes up to about $109 roughly, just on the labor cost. That does include all of the additional benefits costs of a labor of someone's hour.
Yeah.
We don't necessarily have to do anything tonight. I want to lay that for you for consideration.
What is it now, $35 fee, correct?
$35 fee. Yeah, if you look at your, have you got the document?
It's, it's after the minutes.
If you look at the document, the first, the first column is the present fee, and then we have option two, that's based on labor only, and then option, excuse me, option one, based on labor only, and option two is an estimate based on the labor and other overhead and administrative costs. Because every time, every time we have to cut somebody off and bring them back on, you're also putting labor, unnecessary labor on the front office staff. Sometimes police officers, just depends on the situation. I have found that this $500 fee recently imposed is pretty much solid, that if you hit people in the wallet, they may pay their bill on time. Is there any action recommended at this time, or do you want to wait in this table?
I think, yeah, I'd like to check with, like, Blackstone and Bertville, see what their charges for their reconnect.
That's fine. With that in mind, we'll table it, let's discuss until.
And there, there is a grace period.
Or reconnect? No, or tampering. Tampering, yeah, we're just set.
There's a grace period for, so if someone doesn't pay in June, it's non-shut-off until July.
Yes, 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 yeah, that's exactly, yeah, they have a month. They've basically, got more than 30 days to it, so. All right, with that in mind, we move to blight reduction. The town attorney's already talked to you about the Watson House across the street. If you have not seen it, I would encourage you to go look at it, there's a big pile of those. They're not finished dragging it away, but it, it came down. She also talked to you about the Hussey House, and she will be in contact with the, I assume, the son of the lady that owns it. We also have a letter from Sue Williamson that has references to some junk on Melody Lane and a request for handicapped parking spaces at the Scarlet Beauty Salon. I will pass this over to the town manager to find out what needs to be done. I'm assuming it'll be, I might have to do the handicap, I don't know. With that in mind, we've got a committed, a Chinese committee.
Well, it's great to have a town man who you're getting. And we've been, we've been discussing some things, and we'll be meeting again. We did previously discuss insurance here, and we'll be meeting with them again soon. Everything else is in good shape. I'm glad to turn over my check signing papers. But it was a pleasure to work in the town office, especially with Tiffany and Norma. We're all good friends now, and they were a lot of fun, but I'm glad to leave. On a daily basis, anyway.
Thank you, ma'am. First town committee, Mr. Reed.
Well, we have a town manager now, obviously. We gained a town manager and lost a police officer. Officer Lusor resigned, so we're actively looking for another officer. Hope that's all.
All right, thank you, sir. Committee of Development, Mrs. Bowen.
What's happening at this time?
Technology Development, Mr.?
Oh, we will be having a meeting, hopefully sometime this month or early next month. I do want you to meet with the town manager before I even go over some of the initiatives.
Very good, very good. I have been busy with domestic issues, so I have not, anybody will continue in business? Anybody have anything I want to address?
Just a real quick, I finally got a response from Department of Behavioral Health and Environmental Services on the water rates that we charge. If you recall, I put in a FOIA request to the people who work two doors down from my office, and it took until last month for me to get a response.
Did they push it back?
No, they just, just delayed it, and in fairness, they have a lot of stuff going on, too, but boy is FOIA. But the very rough numbers that I ran this morning, I'll have to run them again, but it looks like we are about 44.5% under the average for VCBR and 29.4% under the average for penal charge, actually, in terms of what we're charging for water. So we are nearly half and one-third, respectively, for underdowling. So we do have plenty of room to, uh, charge more against.
You sent out there from the town manager?
Yes.
And we need to come up with a rate structure.
What about the prison and the school prison?
Uh, the prison, going back to the document from a little while. I believe it was somewhere between a quarter and 40%, so 25 and 40% under the statewide average for the other prison system.
Question of the town attorney, if we want to basically bring our rates in line, do we have to advertise that rate increase? Go through that process?
Okay.
So if, let's get the town manager, Mr. Reed, to meet here and figure out, we got to do the original rating, please, so we can do all the connecting. That needs to be ready to graduate.
And in fairness, it was the secretary himself who raised the rates on them.
Yeah. You're all the guys.
Yes, yes.
That's why I'm suddenly hearing and supporting.
All right. Good deal. Any other team, if you notice, with that in mind, we move on to new business, any new business. During the new business, we move on to personal privilege. Mr. Reed. No privilege here. Ms. Bowen.
Yes, sir.
Ms. Stinson. Mr. Knight. Mr. Abel. Mr. Miskelick.
I did want to thank you and the Vice Mayor for everything that you've done in the past few months, you know, working in the town office, and also, we can all remember the Foss family. Former council member Foss, his wife passed away.
Yes, yes, yes. We need to make arrangements. You already got it? Okay, thank you. All right, with that in mind, we move into executive session. I need a motion to adjourn to executive session or closed session consistent with the Virginia State Code 2.2-3711A, subsection 1, personnel, subsection 3, property.
I'm moving, I'm making motion to move into executive session inconsistent with Code 2.2-3711A, personnel and property.
All right, thank you. We have a motion from Mr. Reed. We have a second. We have a section, second from us tonight. Any further discussion? All the time, say aye. All opposed by like side. Motion cares. Thank you. All right, at this time, we're at a closed session, and I need to certify that the closed session was consistent with Virginia State Code 2.2-3711A, subsection 1 for personnel and subsection 3 for property. Mr. Reed.
Certified.
Ms. Bowen.
Certified.
Ms. Stinson.
Certified.
Mr. Knight.
Certified.
Mr. Abel.
Certified.
Mr. Miskelick.
Certified.
Very well, we are certified. At this point, I will entertain a motion to appoint Stevie Sisk to fill the seat vacated, recently vacated by Bobby Duffy.
So moved.
And a motion by Mr. Knight, a second by Mr. Abel. Any further discussion? All the time, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed by like side. I will entertain a motion to authorize, excuse me, a motion for the authorization for retroactive pay increase, specifically a 10% bump in the town clerk's salary for the performance of town manager duties for the period of 1 October 2019 to 10 January 2020. Do we have a motion?
So moved.
So moved. Motion by Ms. Stinson, second of us tonight. Any further discussion? All the time, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed by like side. Motion carries unanimously. At this time, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Mr. Knight. It's a motion to. Is there a motion?
Nobody else wanna leave? Nobody else wanna leave?
All in favor, say aye. All right, we're adjourned and it is seventy-five.